Okay. Now I convene the Minter and Town Council meeting of March fifth, 2025. Have a roll call, please.
Kate here.
Dusty here.
Tom here.
Brian here.
Lynn here.
Eric here.
And earlier. With that, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull any item from there? Now we can have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Dusty, second by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next, we have approval of the regular agenda. Any amendments, revisions? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Eric, second by Dusty. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Do we have any declarations of conflict of interest on any item on the agenda tonight from the board?
Just the Minter and Town home paving sex, or sorry, drainage section of 12B. So bail when we get to that point.
Okay. Kate, do you have a conflict as well?
Do I? I don't think I do.
Okay. I just wonder why Tom doesn't, she doesn't.
She's just, she's on way on Taylor.
General, General Taylor Street.
For the, for the General Taylor conversation.
I thought she lived in town, I'm sorry.
No, no.
For the general.
You never invited me over for dinner.
For the General Taylor conversation, I'll stick around, but not when you get to the town on speed.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Let's see, now we have, now we're at the point of public comment. If they, if anyone out there wants to address council on any issue that is not on the agenda, be welcome by state your name and give us your address and ask good questions or address council and issues. Do we have anybody out in Zoom land? Okay, I'll move on. Uh, next we have council comments and committee reports, so. Starting at your end, Kate.
I was just gonna give an update on a couple of events that's coming up. Friday is First Fridays, and it's this Friday, it's at Gel Z Art Gallery and Wild Mountain Cellars. It's between four and six, and it's 103 William Street. It's exactly right behind Magusto's. And then next Monday is the Community Potluck. This is gonna be the last one for the year. It's sponsored by the Minter Community Fund, and that's gonna be here at the Town Hall between 5:30 and seven, and it's an Italian theme. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
We are taking over training all the senior citizens at the SSA every Wednesday night, Wednesday morning, 11 o'clock.
Oh, nice.
So, come on out.
I'm good there. How long have I been saying that? Brett?
I have it here.
Just that I've applied to be on the board of the Eagle County Fire District as the Minter representative.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm sure Daryl will be relieved. He's been trying to.
Yeah, Daryl was, Daryl was very, he's been term limited for a long time. But I, I think their function is really important, particularly right now, it's a perilous time.
Indeed. Okay, Eric?
Just a couple of items. One, as I'm sure everybody knows by now, Scott Fitzwilliams, who was the district manager for White River, is no longer there, which is who we've been working with for Dow, Dow Junction for the last 15 years, so. Start anew, I guess. And what was my other thing I had? At the, our, like, we have had the core transit retreat last week, and we are hoping, it's not nailed down yet, but there's a good chance that we'll have five extra routes coming into Minter. So, and also, they came up with an interesting specification. We, we have good data on how many driving miles, both with buses and with cars. And they have, we have this amazing bit of software that does some calculations, and the calculations comparing the two over the last, since the regional transit department has been in operation, 80% of the metric, measured by metric tons of greenhouse gases, there's been an 80% reduction in that timeframe. So, just for the driving of cars and, and the driving of the buses, so that was pretty good news for us, so, for all of us.
Uh, let's see, okay, staff reports.
Nothing in my reports in the packet if anybody has a question.
Okay. Yeah, I like that. Okay. Uh, next we have special, no special presentations, so we're moving on to business items. The first item is resolution number eight, series 2025, a resolution appointing Downtown District, what's A?
Downtown Development Authority, Earl.
Develop. Okay, there we go. We got board members that have applied. This is a new feature in our town where we can get property owners and business owners and so forth. We'll have a funding mechanism from the town so that they can do improvements within their authority. And it doesn't cost the town a drop, so that's a really good idea, and I'm glad we're finally getting to that point. And so with that, I understand that, you know, Tom is going to represent the council, the single council person on the board. And then we have four applicants, and we don't have, because I understand one of them dropped out. So, we have basically four applicants.
Earl, can I, sorry, can I jump in? We have five applicants for four seats.
Oh.
We initially had six, sorry, we initially had six, and one with J. So we have five applicants for four seats.
But that's not, you're, I'm counting Tom as not needing to apply.
Correct, so we will have five seats on the board, including the council seat, four additional seats, but we have five applicants for the four seats.
Oh, okay.
So I just wanted to clarify that. And then, and then if I could just clarify, again, to recap for everyone, that the Downtown Development Authority from Minter passed in the November election, and we officially established the DDA by ordinance in December. I only point that out because the way the state statute is written for DDAs, the terms do fall a little bit funny. So, we're getting this just started, but we have four seats that will be filled. Two of the terms, because we have to do staggered terms, two of the terms will expire quite quickly. They will expire June 30th of this year. Whoever ends up in those seats can certainly reapply to be reappointed right away, and future terms will be four years. The other two seats will expire on June 30th of 2026. And then, if those people are interested, they of course can reapply to be reappointed, and then those would be four-year terms as well. So that's how those terms will work. Jay will go over or provide the ballots for you. We will have a voting that will happen, and then if we have any ties, we will ask for volunteers to take the shorter, those shorter terms. And again, we do have five applicants for four seats. I have, I believe, I can't see down there, but I think we have a few people here in person, and I have a couple on Zoom. So if council has questions of the applicants, we can go into that next.
So yeah, I think we will probably let each applicant present themselves to the board and why they want to be on it, and if anyone has any questions from the board that they'd like to learn more about you, we'll go through that process and then go from there. So we have a list of the five here. Spencer, Spencer Dubauer, Tom Warren from MR Minter, Morgan McLaughlin, and Joe Delude, and Zane Gierhart. So with that, since, since you're at the top of the list right now, come do your thing. Just give a idea of why you want to be on the board and what your vision is.
Spencer Dubauer, 4440 Irving Street. I'm a resident, but I'm also a business owner at 161 Main. We just went through the process, so we're building a distillery downtown. Will be the first kind of improvement to fund this DDA, as our building will be, I estimate around 50,000 to 60,000 per year on excess property taxes, our improvement property taxes. So we have a vested interest in where kind of our money starts to go. We love this town, we're starting this huge business here. I've, we have that experience of dealing with community members and also the town and what's kind of, and managing that, what can be frictional or friction between some of them. And we really want to see, my wife and I, but I applied for this because I want to really bring that downtown core up and increase visits, increase sales tax revenue. And, and I love the DDA mechanism to kind of help fund all these improvements we look forward to downtown.
Any questions for this group?
Okay.
Sorry, I said yes. Literally. So, same question I'm gonna ask everybody, so everybody else can think about it. Name two deficiencies as you see it right now in our policies or practices in the town when it comes to business, and currently two current positive policy aspects of where we're heading. That's question one.
You want to sit down and think about it? He said, I wish that was the number one.
You're here every meeting, so you already know the answer.
I, I found council planning and zoning and the town staff to have been very helpful, so I find that as a positive. As a small business owner, if we're involved as with everybody, we get a lot of good feedback, and it's a collaborative effort. So that's one. Two positives, we're really strong nightlife, like, and it's short, five, eight thirty, nine. But Thai Kitchen, Country Club, Saloon, like, all of the restaurants, especially in our block, are really big draws. Everyone pops into, to the dram before or after dinner. So if we can kind of create that throughout the rest of the day, and I think that's one of our detractors, is we have nothing during the day. We have a couple of retail shops, and when we were forming the DDA, Bill Schrum, or during the information sessions, Bill mentioned the daytime pays the bills and the nighttime is kind of the profit at the end of the day. And I think we struggle with that, that kind of daytime. I'm not skiing today, it's beautiful during the summer. I walk through Minter and I've gone into two shops, and what else is there to do right now, besides wait till four or five for dinner? Pedestrian access and speed are probably the detractor of people hit that curve and they hit 45 as soon as they can, so trying to slow people down so they don't, they feel like they can walk. And the more we walk, the more they park in the mini lot, the more shops they see and pop into, instead of just driving, parking right in front and hopping in.
Okay, and the other one, based on more complaints than compliments, because we have a swath of property owners here that obviously have business tenants. So, you know, moving forward to getting the DDA efforts, as you see it right now, many of the property owners, their efforts or lack of support for their business tenants, general maintenance, upkeep, renovations is required on those properties. From a DDA standpoint, what do you see we would want to do to correct that?
I don't know. I think that's a tough situation because they are private property owners, so they can.
Sure.
The DA, if the town can't force them to upkeep the property, then the DDA is not gonna have much more teeth. But maybe we could help out in incentives, just as an idea.
So food for thought on that, because obviously that's a significant issue in this town.
I would agree. Not for my property owner, but.
No, I'm sure, why is that thing?
Which is you.
Which is me.
That's all I got.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Tom Warren, you're next from MR Minter. Hey, Tom.
Hello, how are you all doing this evening? Thank you for letting me speak tonight, be very brief, but obviously, our organization has a significant holding in Minter, and I think that it would be beneficial for me to be on this board in an aspect of trying to bridge some of the disconnect between our group and the town, as well as making sure that we are communicating efficiently and effectively in what our plans are and what we are doing, and this will be a good avenue for that, because while we're not actively pursuing any current development plans, it is a reoccurring meeting that we can have an open discussion of what we're doing with our stuff. My background in development and in historic preservation, as I've said on the board of Historic St. Elmo and Chuck Creek for almost 20 years, so I do have a lot of experience in dealing with older buildings and preserving them. I do think that it is important that MR Minter does have a representation on this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, you want to repeat your question?
Sure. Need me to repeat them? The questions I asked before?
If you could, because I'm having just a little bit of trouble hearing you, I apologize.
So, two deficiencies as you see it right now, as far as policies or guidelines within the town regulations, and two current positive policy directions as far as the town is concerned in regards to business development and support.
Of course, one of them actually was a negative that has turned into a positive. For a long time, there was some confusion with the moratorium of what we could do, so we are absolutely thrilled with the holdings we have to actually have a path forward and know what we can and can't do. That was a confusing time, not only as a property owner, but as someone that would possibly liquidate properties, because it was difficult even to explain to a purchaser what they could or could not do. So something that was a, a huge negative actually has turned into a huge positive, because there is pretty clear-cut code now of what you can do. The second positive would absolutely be the give and take that was done on the historic preservation front. I know that there was, you know, a lot of people that probably didn't love some of the stuff that was given if you did historically preserve your building, but as a property owner, it gave me the leeway to go back to my partnership and, and explain that, you know, some of these buildings actually make sense from a viability standpoint, because there's more uses, use by right that we did not have before. So that was a, a huge, huge positive. A second negative, and this is obviously no one's fault, because local and county government, this problem all over Colorado. Some of the attrition has been kind of crazy since we had holdings in Minter. We've had so many different planning people and so many different, you know, town staff. Thank goodness that Cindy is still there, because she keeps a lot of stuff still going, and that can be really hard to build a working relationship and a conversation when there's a lot of turnover. But that, you know, we've still got people that we can work with there, and that's a positive. The second positive, I would say, is I have found the town staff to be unbelievably easy to communicate with compared to other projects that we've done. Michelle and Cindy have an open dialogue with us all the time. They will get ahold of me if there's ever an issue, and I can't tell you how helpful that is. So real kudos to, even though Michelle's not here anymore, Cindy still being there is, is a great sigh of relief. So thank you, Cindy.
The second one, so as you said, you are large property owners, obviously have been a fair amount of complaints of property owners and efforts to support or not support the tenants, business tenants, general maintenance, upkeep, renovation of those properties. How do you foresee, if you're on the board, how to correct that situation?
Well, all of our leases are triple that, so we don't do renovations of properties. That is the responsibility of the tenant, but, you know, obviously, we've done water connections at a great expense to solve the issue at Kathy's Uptown, including having to pull C dot cut permits to get that water tap situation fixed. We are not opposed to doing repairs to buildings if it is an exterior item that is our issue, but most of the issues that our buildings have are interior issues, and in the, in an lease setup, that would not be our responsibility. So I don't know how much of that would be affected by the DDA.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Next we have Morgan McLaughlin.
Good evening, I'm Morgan McLaughlin. My ownership interest is in 107 William Street that currently operates as a short-term rental on the second floor and commercial storage space on the first floor. My family has been involved in Minter since the mid eighties, and I have grown up with a strong affinity for the town. As you may or may not know, my family did sell a majority of our holdings to Tom Warren's group, and so we, I definitely have experience in the ups and downs of Minter. And remember, you know, in the nineties, the thriving downtown commercial community, lots of flowers, lots of, we kept the buildings very immaculate, but over time, you know, the building started to deteriorate, and the expenses just were too much, and we were not in a position to do redevelopment, and that prompted us to sell. We chose not to sell 107 as a separate family entity, because we remain very bullish on the future of Minter. We are also very keen on preserving what makes Minter special and unique, and really unlike any other mountain town in the country. But at the same time, economic viability is critical, and so businesses do need to be sustainable. And I also think there is a responsibility for business owners to be ensuring that buildings do maintain, that they're maintained well. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to the DDA as being, you know, an important way to bring discussions of how we ensure Minter is a very viable downtown. And then to answer the specific questions on positives, I, I do echo the other candidates' positions that the staff is amazing. I remember when the Minter market was getting started and just the kind of small-town entrepreneurial spirit of just, like, roll up your sleeves and just try something. And I think that's been maintained now with the transition with Cindy. I don't know anyone in a small town or a large town that would be so open to answering texts, reaching out, and so that is something really wanting to preserve if possible. I think, you know, as a short-term rental owner, you know, the balance of housing in the town is important, and I do think one of the positive policies has been, you know, further refining short-term rental licensing and being very intentional with full-time housing versus commercial STRs. I think deficiencies, I think we look at deficiencies by looking at the health of the downtown. And so looking at parking, signage, the overall aesthetic. It's competitive, Minter has, you know, over time, lost visibility to Eagle and Avon. And we need to get back that excitement for Minter. And I, and I do feel over the last year, as someone who does not reside full-time in Minter, seeing from the outside the new distillery, the revitalization of the Minter Inn and the saloon, there's like a new energy that I think is really exciting for the downtown. So I don't know if I answered all the questions.
Okay, thank you, Morgan. Next in line is Joe Delude.
Hi, everyone. Joe Delude, 145 North Main, also known as Eagle River Inn. I live in the worst room in the hotel, the Cobblers shoes, Cobblers kids are barefoot, as you say. Moved to Minter to start a business, fell in love with the, with the town itself. Attended these meetings, and it really, can, to get to know people in this town that are working so hard on the town and care about it, it really inspired me. So when this opportunity came up, I said, boy, I'd like to be part of that, too. Do have a vested interest, invest a lot of personal assets and time and passion into our business. So I would like to be representative and part of what is going on downtown. Walk my dog up and down 100 Block a couple times a day. Sometimes I get stuck at Spencer's halfway through that walk, and the walk tends, my wife comes looking for me.
Check it out, tasty.
Yeah, occasionally I get lost there, Spencer will witness that. But yeah, so why do I want to be part of the DDA? I'm excited to be part of the town, I'd love to contribute. I'm passionate about it, I have the ear of visitors, and I think visitors at the hotel give us a lot of great feedback about what works and what doesn't work, what they'd like to see more of. Yeah, and my background is really working with committees, it's what I do. I teach fiduciary governance to corporate committees in the investment world. So a lot of experience working and making the peace and working with groups, trying to get the answers that make sense for everybody. To Tom's questions on the policies, geez, I'm glad you aren't like my father-in-law, I wouldn't be married right now if I had that tougher question, but you asked policies, I can't quote policies, but I'll just stick with the way other people answer the positives. The, I, I think that the passion around the town and everything we see about, you know, everything from the, from what goes on here, to the fact you've got five people, four spots, the first time this has been brought up, to all the interest just in talking to, the fact that it got passed. I think that's a lot of positive momentum for people wanting to see things done, and the town was very much part of making this a possibility, certainly a positive. Just sitting in these meetings and hearing about all the things that need to be done and they're being focused on, it really seemed like everybody's pulling in the right direction. There's gonna be differences in ways to go about it, but I think that's all been very positive. The negatives, I haven't seen, you know, I see there's problems everywhere, but I haven't seen that really anything I can point out to this point that I would call out as a, as a negative.
Well, your dog likes whiskey, so that just makes everything rosy.
You're right, I'll tell my wife it's the dog. That's it, thank you, Tom, blame it on the dog. That's it? Good? Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Zane Gierhart?
Seems that we have some good candidates here. I'm Zane Gerhart, I live at 164 Railroad Avenue, I've lived there for about three years. Saw the opportunity to join the DDA as an opportunity to kind of roll my sleeves up, probably should have saved the animation on that till I got up here to kind of roll in civically and see how I could assist in any way possible. Previously, I worked with Habitat for Humanity for the last 10 years, so development and the kind of aspects there. And full disclosure, I helped finance the building I live in, so I have nice in-road of where I get to sleep at night. But also, we have several of the Minter North single families going out currently, so as a private lender, I also do some amount of development within Minter, specifically, full disclosure. It just seemed like a nice opportunity to kind of help guide where, after 12 years in the valley, I thought is a really nice place to be. So, kind of to the two earlier questions, yeah, the deficiencies of policy, seeing some of the own developments we've had, kind of reviewed in here, is the difficulty of balancing kind of the need for modernity when it comes to easements and setbacks and the height of buildings and parking requirements. All of that is a very delicate balance when it comes to what I saw in everyone's application, aspiration to kind of preserve the character of this community. I saw quality, I saw quaintness, I saw quirkiness, it's a place that people want to be, and it seems like from this forum that you stay. And so, the other one, I would say it's kind of enforcement. That's a difficult thing within the framework of a small town here, is we could write all the codes in the world, but if someone doesn't adhere to them, how much do you spend in offset with trying to channel that and make sure it's followed through? From a policy positivity standpoint, it seems that there is a lot of forward. From a policy positivity standpoint, it seems that there is a lot of forward positive momentum. I was reviewing the DDA and kind of the inclement conditions of other small towns, Netherland and Rifle and Woody Creek that have done this as well. So there's a lot of framework out there of how something like this can kind of create a collaborative, say, difference between the private citizen, i.e. myself, the business owner and community members, that the DDA has a lot of positive kind of fostering capabilities. The other one is, yeah, this is from all the experience I've had with various town councils in Eagle County, like seems there's a consistency of quality of people in Mintern. And so under that framework, it's nice to feel like in a place that not only people want to be, but people want to make better. And so those are kind of being my positives and deficiencies. And then the property maintenance question. It is a difficult one as well. If it's on the tenant or it's on the building owner, I think kind of rising tide raises all ships. So maybe the DDA can be the facilitator, the kind of distribution project or signage or otherwise, you know, kind of provide some opportunity to motivate people to aspire to a standard instead of requiring them to. Maybe it's easier carrot than stick. So appreciate the opportunity to put my hat in the ring and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Zane. Well, this is not going to be easy. Okay, so at this time, go ahead and do the balance, please.
Okay, I have balance here. In order to be appointed, they need four. Your name is on the top right corner, left corner, excuse me. If you would just make sure you get the right ballot.
They specify the month versus one year or two months on the ballot?
Are we doing it by?
Are we just scholarship?
You vote for four. And then?
She's talking about how we have the two term.
The top, the, the.
It's supposed to say scholarship board seat?
No, it's, I'll fix that. Apologize for that. We should be pretty close to getting four votes for each person. I mean, you know, it's gonna be tough.
Like, are we voting for, I want this person to be on for the one year plus and this person to be on?
If you did the one, if you did it with numbers, that would help to do that. I see what you're saying.
One, two, three, four?
And one and two are for which of those things?
The longer term.
Also, maybe see a typo here on page 116. Where it's on the application, it's kind of off to the left, it says planning commission.
Yes, that was my error.
Okay, I just figured it should have said like downtown development.
It should have. We used the same form but changed it and I missed.
Thanks, Cindy.
Yes, sorry, Dusty.
There you go, Jake. Sorry. She's had some Jeopardy theme music going through here while I'm waiting.
Gonna be a lot harder to play with all those numbers. That wasn't such a good idea.
Anybody want to do a recess?
I think we should all just stare at Jake. That will accelerate the process.
Okay, we have Spence with the long term, Tom with the long term, Morgan with the short term and Joe with the short term.
Okay, so we've established the board.
And these are public ballots. It's just easier to keep track of them if they're, if they're written.
Okay, so we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 88, series 2025. A resolution appointing Mintern Downtown Development Authority Board members, which consists of Tom Priest, Spence Newbauer, Tom Warren, Morgan McLaughlin and Joe Delu.
Okay, motion by Dusty, second by Kate. Was that Kate? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Congratulations to you all. Zane, I do appreciate you being on board and not getting, coming out to this because keep floating around in case somebody else fails. So, thank you.
I'm kind of too big to float, but I appreciate it.
Okay. Next item is resolution number nine, series 2025, a resolution approving an encroachment removal agreement.
Mr. Mayor, a while ago, the town noticed that there were some encroachments into a piece of property the town owns or a right of way called Meadow Lane. The town went out and investigated and some kind of patio and landscaping improvements had been extended into the public right of way. We sent a notice letter to the owners of the property who I believe are here with us today. Yeah, okay. Chris and Juliet Rhodes. We have worked out an agreement whereby those improvements will be removed from the public right of way in light of the weather conditions and what we know late spring is like. We wanted to provide the owners through the end of June to, to make those changes. I would just note the town will have its surveyor go out and state the, the extent of the right of way just so that it's clear where the, the edge of the right of way is located. And, you know, we expect that, you know, we'll have this issue resolved by the end of June. The property owners are here if you want to ask any questions. But again, the staff is comfortable with the agreement and the Rhodeses have already executed the document.
Well, I have a statement. Is, you know, Mintern does have a few right of ways that are woods. So I can understand the mistake and so no big deal there. But do y'all have any statement y'all want to make or anything? Any other questions? Thirty-four.
I guess our only thing is, oh, should I stand up? I can be loud and sitting down, so I don't know. I'm Juliet Rhodes. Can you hear, is that good? I don't want to be screaming at you. Yeah, everyone, we've worked with everyone and all the documents and all the attorney stuff and trying to figure out, I think, as you mentioned, the woods and figuring out, oh, we bought the house two and a half years ago. And there's the original foundation of the garage. And so we built our hardscape on that, exactly on that space. And I think when the surveyor comes out, I think that's probably our last question of something that's been there forever. And we just use that as our base. And we didn't jackhammer it out. We left that there. I guess we'll just, that will be an open, I mean, that will be the conversation. Totally understand the woods and that. And I know there's some weird stuff going on past us that I'm sure you all know what I'm talking about. But I think that's our only thing is just that foundation that we built exactly on. We use that sort of as our, our North Star. And I don't know if it was right.
Well, encroachments are another thing. Those are quite normal.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I think it's, I mean, it was there since like two houses ago or something. So I don't know how that works with, I know, like with real estate, sometimes there's like when something's been there for a certain amount of time that it becomes standard. So I guess when we have the surveyor out, it's something we'll find out. I just want to bring that up, that we built on the existing stuff.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, yeah, any other questions for Mike or the other? This is a resolution. Invite a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution nine, series 2025, a resolution approving an encroachment removal agreement.
Second.
Motion by Dusty, second by Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you very much. Next, we have ordinance number four, series 2025, first reading. I don't submit in chapter 13, 16 and 17 of the Mintern Municipal Code and to incorporate into a code existing restrictions on connections to the town's water system based on limitations of available legal and physical water supply.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as the council is aware, we have had a more water moratorium in place since 2020. The town is actively working on ways in which that moratorium can be lifted. But it is going to be a while before those efforts can be brought to fruition. And as a result, the town wanted to make clear through amendments to the code the general enforceability of the restrictions that the moratorium created. So a moratorium kind of lives outside of your code. It's a separate ordinance. People who might be coming into town and looking at development options or property owners, their natural inclination is to go to the code. And because, again, this could be a little wild before the water moratorium is lifted, we thought it was best to embody the restrictions in the code itself. The general outline of what we are including in the code is pretty much the same as what was in the last version of the water moratorium, which was passed in 2023. In essence, if you own a property or adjoining collection of properties, you can, you can obtain water service for the historic use on your property plus one additional SFU service. So that, that is not changing. The code amendment does create a new process. I mean, new, I think Jay does this somewhat already, which is you come in and you would get a letter of service and the letter of service, Jay would determine based on historic billing for the properties, how many SFUs of service historically existed on the land. He would then issue a, a letter saying, you know, oh, you had two houses plus one SFU. That's three SFUs. You can have a letter of service that at the end of your land use approval process, you can connect up to three SFUs of, of water service to the town system. And then we have an amendment to your development codes, to the zoning code and to the subdivision code that's, that include as application requirements, this letter of service. So in other words, if you don't have a letter of service from Jay as to the number of SFUs of service that you can, can connect to the, the town's water service, we will not consider your application for land use approvals as complete and you can't move forward. So that, that's the structure where we think that this is the best way forward until the, you know, new water plant is built and we have additional service. Yes, Lynn?
I just had a question. Because you were talking about historic use plus one. What if there's a piece of property and there's no water tap, but there was historic use? Would they get just plus one or would they get plus two?
Well, let me parse that just a little bit. So to the degree there are vacant lots in town, of which there is a small handful, they would qualify for one. So it would be zero plus one. I believe Jay looks at our, if you want to answer how you kind of go back and determine historic use.
Even vacant, I'm thinking vacant buildings as well.
So there are a couple of properties in town that people tore down a house and they actually have maintained paying the, the water tap. So their historic would be the one that currently exists plus one. So they could have two. If it's a, if they don't have a tap whatsoever.
Yeah, listen, yeah.
I don't know. I'm trying to think of an example of one, but I can't think of it. But it would be if they don't.
For instance, the building that Mattress Factory's on.
Okay, the mattress does not have a tap and it never has had, never did have one. I believe it was a very nice barn for the Nelsons, if I'm not, if Bill Burnett's book is correct. So in that case, it would be zero plus one. However, it gets into the adjoining contiguous property ownership. So they might, the entire property of that section might only have one plus one in itself. So we'd be looking at 20 historical plus one for 21.
Thank you.
I, I would just note that in addition to the, the comments that, or the additions that are shown in this version of the ordinance, I think I'm going to make a couple of changes to the version on second reading. We've had in the past some questions about how the town's definition of an SFU reads in the code. And it kind of occurred to me now is a good time to get that cleaned up. So between, yes, between first and second reading, I'll, I'll craft a little bit of additional language that you'll see on second reading.
So to clarify, this doesn't create any sort of like process where there's like a waiting list for available SFUs when and if more, okay? This is just like, well, obviously, we're all trying to do through a process where we have a water plant and available water. But, okay, so there's no waiting.
We, 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 we learned a little bit the hard way as we instituted the moratorium, you know. We, we allowed people initially to come through the development process, but they would sign an affidavit saying we acknowledge that we're only entitled to 10 plus one SFUs of service for, for our property, even though we are requesting development approvals for 20. And that didn't work out so hot. And so we are changing that what the code implements is essentially if you want to process land use application, it has to be consistent with the letter of service that Jay will issue.
Okay, any other questions for Mike? Okay, since this is an ordinance, I'll open it to the public. Do we have any questions or comments on ordinance number four, series 2025? Anybody out there?
I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. I'll close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Discuss if not. A motion?
Make a motion to approve town of Mintern, Colorado, ordinance number 04, series 2025. Ordinance of the Town of Mintern, Colorado, minting chapter 13, 16 and 17 of the Mintern Municipal Code to incorporate into the code existing restrictions on connections to the town's water system based on limitations of available legal and physical water supply.
Okay, there's a motion by Tom, second by Kate. Roll call, please.
Kate.
Dusty.
Brian.
Eric.
Anna. Next, we're on to the discussion direction items. First item is a discussion of live stream setback regulations and enforcement.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scott Hun with the Planning Department. About a month back.
Uh, about a month back, um, you had in front of you a citizen who was enlightening you to some complaints regarding alleged violations within the thirty foot setback. Mr. Markles is here with us again tonight. Alex, thanks for joining us and thanks for your attention to all these matters. In response to, um, uh, Mr. Markle's testimony or, or public comment that night, you had directed staff to come back, uh, so we could have another discussion about, uh, the town's thirty foot, uh, live stream setback regulations, code enforcement around that regulation, uh, and perhaps some, some options moving forward. As part of that direction, you had indicated an interest in having some subject matter experts join us. So I have reached out to Peter Wadden, who is the watershed health specialist at the Town of Vail. I believe Peter's online. Thank you for, uh, joining us tonight, Peter. I also reached out to Peter Franzen at Eagle River Coalition. I do not believe, um, Mr. Franzen was able to join us tonight, but I also think, uh, Mr. Wadden is on that board and, and can maybe represent both interests. So I'm thrilled that, uh, Peter could join us tonight. I think we've had conversations like this in the past. We've had, um, what used to be the Eagle River Watershed Council, uh, join us to have discussions about, uh, the river setback, what other communities are doing, best practices, um, you know, riparian health, uh, something that I think this town has identified years ago, uh, when the, when the thirty foot setback was established in nineteen ninety nine as something that was important to the town. In the memo I provided to council, I've provided the definition of, or the existing regulation for, uh, the live stream setback, uh, the things that are supposed to be prohibited from that setback, some of the things that are allowed, um, as well as a definition of ordinary high watermark. So that's kind of the, the regulation that we operate off of. And then I also provided, uh, some staff perspective on some of the challenges, uh, that we've had over the years in, uh, not interpreting that, I think it's pretty clear cut, um, but enforcing it and catching violations, uh, a lot of that challenge has to do with, um, the town's bandwidth over the years and, and capabilities from an enforcement standpoint, uh, code enforcement priorities. So, you know, hopefully that kind of outlines what we have, some of the challenges that we've had over the years and enforcing that. Uh, I, I do believe in, in previous conversations, uh, when the town has been presented with, uh, alleged violations and that we've had these discussions about, you know, do we really want to, do we want to go after these folks, uh, practically? Do we want to wait until we receive complaints? I think the direction, uh, since I've been working with the town for the last eight years, has been more status quo. We operate on a complaint basis and then we'll go see what we can find. With regard to the specific complaints that we received in late twenty 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 four, we are, we're in a holding pattern, um, on some of those because we need to literally wait until the snow melts and we can go out and see what, what we find in the ground. So, uh, with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop talking. I think, you know, the, the goal tonight was to facilitate a little bit more discussion. Peter, again, thank you for being here. I think, um, I had asked Peter to be here, so he might share, um, what the Town of Vail, uh, has done over the last four or five years. They've done a lot, uh, around Gore Creek and, um, protecting and kind of gaining back some of the ground, literally, uh, around Gore Creek, um, and made great strides. So, uh, I thought that would be helpful to share, so.
Peter?
Yeah, hi, Scott. Good evening, council members. Before I start, I want to make absolutely clear that, um, I'm not here on, uh, behalf of Town of Vail to advocate for any policies in the Town of Minter. That's, uh, not something I'm authorized to do or I have any interest in doing. My goalie here is to, uh, try to offer some idea of some of the challenges we've faced at Town of Vail. I'm sure, uh, it certainly sounds like they're similar to what Town of Minter is facing. To be honest, our vegetated stream setbacks were just implemented beginning in, uh, twenty twenty three. So in some ways, you know, at least on paper, Town of Minter is several decades ahead of Town of Vail in, um, you know, doing, doing, implementing best practices for stream setbacks. One of the things I strive to get across to, um, our community members in Vail is the importance of riparian vegetation, um, that waterway is more than just, uh, water flowing through a channel. It's an ecosystem that's interdependent on the vegetation on either side of it. The riparian vegetation in particular is, um, you know, really important in preventing erosion, shading waterways, um, which is important for our, you know, cold, cold water trout and aquatic invertebrates, filtering runoff, uh, all kinds of things like that. And one of the things we find in Vail is that when riparian habitat, um, is removed, it's often replaced with something, um, that actually causes active harm to the creek, like fertilized turf grass or, uh, ornamental vegetation that, um, you know, involves chemical applications that can run off into the waterway and, uh, and intensive irrigation that, that impacts our, our water resources. I've got to say it's enforcing this stuff in my experience has been very challenging. It takes a lot of manpower, um, a lot of effort on the ground. It takes, um, getting people out there early in the season to see, uh, what kind of encroachments or mowing has popped up, uh, so that you have time to do outreach to, um, responsible property owners during the growing season. Because I think as Scott alluded to, um, once, once, you know, a, a landscape gets locked in with snow, everything's kind of on pause until the next growing season. So it's a little bit of a race and it can be a little bit of a game of whack a mole. In Vail, we rely pretty heavily on having very up to date aerial imagery that helps us, um, as town staff, uh, be able to see what's changed. We, uh, have subscribed to something called near map imagery that's updated about twice a year. So, um, I have access and actually anyone has public access through our online web maps to, um, pull up these base maps that are updated every six months. So you can see, uh, what has changed from, for example, May of twenty twenty four to September of twenty twenty four. And obviously aerial imagery isn't perfect. Things are obscured by trees and buildings, but it, it can be helpful. But the real answer is really just getting people out there on the ground to see what's going on, uh, so that you can identify violations of regulations and, um, you know, have the opportunity to, to, uh, perform enforcement. Probably the one other thing that I would really emphasize is the importance of, um, or in my experience, the value of a carrot and stick approach. Vail has a modest cost share program for streamfront property owners who want to restore, uh, their stream bank to, to native habitat. Basically giving people, uh, providing up to forty or up to fifty percent cost share, to property owners who want to come into compliance with our regulations. Not a whole lot of property owners have taken advantage of this, but, um, close to a dozen have over, over a several year period. But when I reference the, the carrot as well as the stick, I think that can also be, um, less tan- tangible incentives than money, uh, like education and outreach that helps people understand the importance of this regulation, why it's in place, why the town believes it's important to, um, to enforce it. I find that in Vail, a lot of people are resistant until they wrap their heads around, um, why it's occurring. People really value, uh, the health and well-being of Gore Creek. And if they understand that they're making a sacrifice for that purpose, rather than just being told by the government to do something they don't want to do, um, they seem much more willing to do it. I think that's kind of the, the simple gist of my experience in Vail. I, I gotta say, by no means have we figured it all out or eliminated all of the encroachments. This is going to be, um, an ongoing project and an ongoing challenge for our staff. But in my experience, those are, those are some of the tools we have that can help.
Any questions for Peter?
Pete, thanks for jumping on. We've been talking about this stuff for years on ski tours, things like that. I wonder if you could, uh, share a little bit about your, uh, education efforts that went on before even the passing in twenty twenty three? Cause I know you've been hard at work on some of that things. And the other question I had was around, um, public established river accesses? And how can you use those as a tool to prevent people from establishing their own private ones?
Yeah, um, good to see, Brian. Thanks for speaking up. Thanks for the questions. So, um, I guess I'm trying, trying to balance in my mind the differences between the water quality issues in Minter and in Vail. I think Vales are more emerging and Minterns have kind of been around for a long time. I think people in Mintern have been, um, aware of threats to water quality since at least the nineteen eighties, when, you know, issues started to crop up resulting from, uh, the Eagle Mine and things like that. In Vail, we really had to establish an understanding in the community that there was a problem that needed to be solved. People thought of Gore Creek as, uh, a healthy fishery, a clear, healthy looking stream. When we tried to get locals to, uh, begin to understand that their actions could have an impact on the stream, it was, uh, difficult at first to get people not to blame larger entities, uh, often the highway or the golf course or the resort, um, and sort of deflect responsibility from themselves. So without blaming people or, um, accusing people, we had to kind of paint the picture that things that we all do, uh, have an impact on water quality, including stormwater pollution and runoff from roadways, um, even washing cars, uh, in driveways rather than on gravel or grass where it can, where it can run into the soil. Um, and the way we manage our landscape, um, is probably, probably the biggest challenge in Vail. Has been, has been trying to get people to change the way they landscape and the way that they manage their landscaping. So we've held, uh, workshops for professional landscapers, private homeowner, homeowners. I mentioned our incentive programs, uh, we produce brochures and things like that. We've partnered with, um, you know, some of the great organizations that exist around the valley like Eagle County Conservation District, Eagle River Coalition, um, Eagle River Water and Sanitation District on a lot of those education outreach efforts and tried to make sure that our messaging was, um, in alignment with, that among all those organizations, our messaging was in alignment. And I should say, uh, that those, um, those organizations, Eagle County Conservation District, Eagle River Water and Sand and, um, Eagle River Coalition, all partner to provide, um, turf removal and replacement incentives for, uh, other communities in the valley. I, I know they offer pretty, pretty generous rebates, um, in partnership with Town of Eagle and Town of Gypsum. I'm not sure off the top of my head what the, what the offers are in Mintern, but there, um, there are opportunities to leverage dollars from those towards stream bank restoration. So education and outreach efforts, sorry, Brian, what was the second part of your question?
Around designated public access spots.
Right. I've, I've worked closely, we have, uh, a couple of landscape architects on staff at Town of Vail and it's really an issue of, um, kind of gauging and predicting human behavior. We've, uh, we've really had to kind of try to guess when and where people are going to want to access the river, whether this is launching a boat or just walking down to fish or toss a tennis ball for their dog or, uh, just enjoy some time next to the stream. People want to access water. I think it's, it's pretty natural for human beings to be drawn to water. It's peaceful place to hang out. So you can close a certain number of social trails and a certain number of access points. And with strategic signage, um, barricades, thorny vegetation, things like that, you can encourage people to use, um, other access points that you've designated. But it's really, uh, up to, you know, I guess the town staff, um, to try to figure out how far apart those access points can be before people will create an access of their own. It's really kind of predicting, you know, can we get rid of this access point? Are people going to use it anyway, even though, um, we've, we've tried to block it off or we've tried to close it? Or is this one that we could get rid of and direct people to another, you know, another access point relatively close by, sort of sacrifice, uh, one access, or sacrifice one area in order to restore another, if that makes sense? And that answers your question, Brian.
Thanks.
On the theme of enforcement, since that's kind of where we, the Town of Minter are right now, in light of what we already have established code wise. Uh, I appreciate you guys trying to appeal to people's better judgment through education. But in past circumstances for you guys, what if anything was decided at town level for a course of action to force remediation for modifications to areas that were not in compliance?
In, in a lot of instances, we can, uh, resolve these things without actual enforcement. The threat of enforcement or, you know, simply being caught is enough to get a homeowner to, uh, to comply. And we can, um, you know, if something is permitted or, or falls within the, the permitted parameters, we can, uh, retroactively permit something that already exists. Now, in instances where something, uh, is, you know, encroaching within the setbacks could not be permitted, yeah, we have to, we have to get people to take it out and they have to do it at their cost. We don't want, uh, at least in Vail, we don't want to spend taxpayer dollars cleaning up somebody else's mess. So we have, uh, in, in the code language that we adopted in twenty twenty two, we reference our general penalties, um, within the municipal code, uh, which I believe have a fee structure. Off the top of my head, I, I don't think I could, I can guarantee I'm quoting this correctly, but it's something like two hundred and fifty dollars for the first offense, five hundred for the second, a thousand for the third. And the way that it's written in our code, um, every day that the encroachment remains in violation, those fines can be applied. You know, there, there are some, uh, considerations to be made for what's, what a person can reasonably do to correct, um, something that may have been a sincere mistake. You know, giving people enough time to, to remediate what they've done and not just piling on fines, um, vindictively. And in Vail, we, this is a little bit unnecessarily confusing, but we have issues both with, um, people encroaching into the setbacks on property that actually belongs to them and people building, um, modifications or mowing public property that, uh, does not belong to them in any way. And our, um, our enforcement of those two types of violations is pretty different. Uh, if people, if people are encroaching on town property, it's, um, it's a pretty hard and fast now.
Thanks. Here, you mentioned, I believe you said near map telemetry, is that what you're?
Yeah, it's a, um, I'm sure there are others like it, but, uh, our Town, Town of Vail GIS department, maintains a publicly available mapping application, uh, maps.vail.gov. I'm kind of a geek when it comes to maps, so I like playing around with this and seeing what's out there. It shows property boundaries. There's a layer that can show roughly where the setbacks fall, um, on, on various properties. But the really helpful part in the case of enforcing stream setbacks, um, is that this, uh, this company that we, we get the subscription from, Near Map, uh, does a flyover of Vail twice a year. So they capture aerial images of Vail at very high resolution two times a year. So it's pretty easy for me to toggle between, you know, the twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five images and see, um, if a new patio or a new walkway or a new, uh, unpermitted garden has appeared somewhere. I should emphasize that we don't rely on that exclusively. We also do a lot of on the ground inspections, um, to ensure that. We also do a lot of on the ground inspections to ensure that, that stream setbacks are, you know, that people are complying with stream setbacks.
Any other questions, Peter? Bill, you got any questions? Yep, you test our water all the time.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Mayor, but I was going to say I can offer myself as an expert in subject matter. I didn't come tonight to represent the Water Council, but I do run their water quality monitoring assessment program. I also worked extensively on the community water plan, which rated riparian conditions throughout the valley, including Mintern. I also do all of the land use referrals for the River Coalition, which is taking land use applications and reviewing them for stormwater riparian impacts, water quality impacts, that sort of thing. So, but like I said, I came here as a citizen of Mintern tonight. I'm happy to answer questions from an expert point of view, if you want.
Well, I would say based on our last visitation and some of the evidence provided, which obviously we have to corroborate. I mean, it seems to me sort of what they're doing over at Vale in light of just our 30-foot setback from ordinary high watermark, it's almost seems to be necessitating a nice troll down the river, south to north, north to south of the entire length of the affected area. Because clearly, as we've seen, there are myriad of property owners that maybe have taken the opinion that I'm going to do it. And the likelihood of the town enforcing this is pretty low. So I guess step one is a survey of current areas that are pretty clearly in violation of it. Now, whether we go further in regards to what we keep as far as a database. But then it leads to the next step, what our enforcement process. Because B, obviously, now we have a code enforcement officer, but this is a pretty big, big item to bite off on up at the council level. But obviously, it needs to be tackled. So any other thoughts on that piece?
My thinking is, is when it comes to a matter of environment and ecology, I mean, I was on the council when we did phase one of the Eagle River Restoration after the river had been killed by a dump from the Eagle Mine. And, and we, we did a lot of, there was a fund set up for the Eagle River. We were able to take care, we were able to work with CDVHE, EPA and some others to get phase one, which was from the cemetery to bridge down to about the saloon, where they actually established, you know, pulled cars out of the river, cleaned it up, restored the ripple and tide pool series of, that's normal for mountain streams, by moving the rocks around and creating it. Replaced and restored fauna and flora through that area. And it's now become, it's now, it's probably about, I would say about 80% recovered. Bill might have a better idea than I do for sure. But it's, it's a lot better than it was. And part of that deal was, we couldn't afford to put up any money, but we did do a lot of in-kind work, storm drain systems with the settling bolts along the river. So the storm drains were not dumping too much crap in the river. And, and, and over the years, it's just, it's pretty frustrating because we, we all, we all love the river. And we, we, we've had a lot more building along the Eagle River and we can't afford, we couldn't afford, and maybe I think we maybe need to afford now, active enforcement when it comes to those kinds, these kinds of issues. It's, it's, you know, it was our responsibility to police the area. But back in, back in the early, was it 2002 to 2004 when we did that work? We didn't have the staff or the capabilities to actively enforce it. And obviously, people on the river, some people on the river, I should say, have ignored it. And much of the detriment of the stream has been explained. This is not just, oh yeah, it's not a big deal, the water runs downstream, no big deal. But it does. It affects the plant life and it reflects the wildlife, the biology of the river, the health of the river. And we need to do a little bit better job than we've been doing. So I would like to, we'll have to go, go and try to figure out how we're going to do it. But we do need some, some active surveillance over there. We can walk the railroad tracks and get a pretty good idea of what's been going on. Maybe get a set of volunteers together to do it and take pictures and make sure that things aren't going, going south on us. So that's the way I feel.
Well, one messy issue I perceive is what we're willing to grandfather in, particularly with respect to structures that now are illegal that were approved by the town. And that might be a question for Mike, too, what jurisdiction we have to say, although we approved it, we shouldn't have.
Probably so. Our processes are, actually, our processes are a lot better now, but.
I could think of something specifically, some expensive improvements that were, to my knowledge, approved by the town, but shouldn't have.
Yeah, well, there has been, these regs were done in 2000 to 2002. The setback was before then. I don't recall exactly when.
99.
99?
Yep.
Okay.
I think of a hot tub, for example.
Is it inside the 30-foot setback on a patio?
It is not. It is, I'm familiar with it because it's something we did 30 years ago. It's not my property now, and I'm appalled that, you know, but it was approved by the town at the time. It's a hot tub built in right next to the river. I mean, like a couple, probably six feet away. So I don't.
Well, it might get floated away during the survey.
But it's kind of a tough situation.
I said it might get floated away during the survey inadvertently, of course.
It's pretty sturdy.
Lynn, if I may, I think, you know, I think Earl, you alluded to this. There, there sounds like an interest in doing more, doing better, which probably has an implication on staffing, resources and a process. You know, how do we actually do this? How do we deal with identifying and researching improvements that may have been there prior to the regulation being established or after? And whether or not they were approved erroneously after the regulation was, you know, so those, that, that's going to take time. And perhaps one of the next steps over the next couple of months is for staff to really try to get their heads wrapped around that and come back with some recommendations on what that might take.
I mean, ultimately, it seems to me step one is going to be putting together a team, whether it's resident experts and obviously a surveyor, so we can consistently establish the high water mark, survey that stretch in question, and then go back, as you said, and archive, research. What's grandfathered, what's been approved, what hasn't been approved, what doesn't matter? Because there's no way that even went through any kind of DRB process. It's just there and it's not in compliance. And then obviously, the big animal is, okay, here's the list, now what?
Can we also reach out to U River Coalition and some other nonprofits and see if there's any like collateral or pressures or door hangers or whatever? We can go drop on properties that border the river?
Yeah.
Seems like that's an easy.
Katie, do you know any organizations that do grants for that kind of?
I, I do, I. I do not. So something I think that the staff will probably have to sit down and figure out, you know, what's, what's possible. I think just a survey, we call it the windshield survey, but this would be the boat survey, kind of taking a look at what's there. If you actually want a surveyor, professional surveyor, then, you know, that would be a, a cost. And so something that we would certainly determine what that cost would be, so.
Well, you say that because obviously, if we go down this road, and again, to allude back to his comments earlier with Vale, if the word gets out in general that, wait a minute, town's sitting up, taking notice and they are now heading down this road, it's quite possible some self-correction will occur without further action. However, there's no getting around the fact that in order to verify that what we are dictating has to be done, obviously, we're going to need an appropriate survey. And unfortunately, that's that high watermark, that's always been a debate ordinary. So, I mean, if we're serious about this, unfortunately, that's an expense I don't see you, we getting around.
Mike, do you see any need for some adjustment to our code to kind of strengthen whatever structure would maybe we'll give a half second to violating this?
No, I, I think your, your code is very clear about the setback and you have a fairly encompassing design review requirement. So, you know, if people are going through design review for site improvements, they, you know, the staff should be identifying these things and, and flagging them and saying no. You know, historically, as Lynn highlights, there are, there are some structures in the setback that the town issued certificates of occupancy or, you know, permits for those get grandfathered in. But, you know, for things that people have just gone out and constructed without town review, that's, that's on them. And I think again, you know, Scott can chime in, but I think your, your design review guidelines are pretty, pretty well established.
And people say back in the early 2000s or who have gone through, you know, the regs were not as they are now. But I think that the 30-foot setback being established in 99, 99 forward, there was no grandfathering, right? It's just a matter of establishing that.
If you had a, if you had a structure, I mean, if there was a structure that existed before the code came in place, that's a, that's a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
It was a setback, what, back in 1991. There was a setback requirement, but the town waived it pretty easily.
Again, if the town took some action to allow the building to take place or if the structure was erected, erected prior to the establishment of the code provision, then they're pre-existing non-conforming. And that, I mean, I, I guess this is something to highlight. That doesn't mean, mean they get to stay forever. They're subject to the town's pre-existing non-conforming chapter of the zoning code, which says that if they, you know, if they're damaged more than 50% or they need repairs in excess of 50% of the value, they have to be removed. So there is a process in the code under which those structures would, over time, come out of the setback. But to get, to get, to get to your question, you should probably follow up with Scott and see if he has.
No, I, I agree with what Mike is saying. I think we do a good job of identifying as new homes are coming through. We've had, we've had situations in the last few years where folks are buying older properties, wanting to remove the homes and they've got existing decks and things right up to the river. And they say, gosh, we'd really like to keep this. And we'd say, that's great, but you can't. It comes out and you're going to comply with our 30-foot setback. So we've had some situations where we've been able to correct and, and remove those structures, decks, hot tubs, things like that. As I mentioned in my, in my memo, I think one of the challenges we have is once we do our final inspections at a new residence or remodel, we give them a certificate of occupancy, things happen. Grass that was supposed to be native starts being mowed. Patios and other, you know, enjoyable things down by the river show up. That's my sense, and I think that reflects some of the complaints that we've received. Again, it goes back to the enforcement. Thank God we have Kim Rindi on staff now. We have someone that can actually go out and, and work on this stuff. But we didn't for a number of years, so there was a gap in time. And even before that, I think there was a, you know, one person with a small but very active town that needed a lot of enforcement correction. So it's always going to come down to kind of a staffing issue and a political will issue. I don't believe in the past, there's been a real interest in taking a real firm approach to this. So if that's perhaps the, the direction now, I think we need to talk seriously about bandwidth and priorities. And not tonight, but so.
Alex Markell's from 624 Main Street. I can't thank you enough as a group of concerned community members for addressing this. One observation, when I went to research my complaints, the direction that was given to me was simply submit a core request for building permits that have been issued for, for improvements that you've witnessed. And in the case of the enclave, it was pretty clear that there were buildings that had no permit. Or I shouldn't say buildings, decks that had been added to that had no permit. So that was, I mean, to me, when they get out there this spring, it'll be fairly cut and dried because they'll know which places had the, you know, got a building permit and which didn't. One other thing I, is really a matter of my own curiosity. Of, of course, another thing that I applaud is the effort to quiet title the river. And I know that that has been a long time coming. What I was confused by was why the city or the town didn't try to quiet title whatever riverfront is not privately owned. Because what we see now among many of these folks that are moving in is that they're buying these homes and they're very quickly moving to quiet title the land between the, the riverbed and their property line. And I just wanted to better understand why that was and if there would be a consideration to, to, to look and say, well, this lot, it's, you know, it, it, there's a, a no man's land between the riverbank and the back of their property. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Mike, would you like to elaborate on that?
I think the decision to focus the quiet title action between the high water marks on either side of the river was apolitical. That is to say, there's a lot of people in our community who live down there who historically have kind of used their property for recreation or other purposes down to the high watermark. And it's also legal. You don't just get to go in and say, my land. You actually have to have, meet the, the requirements of adverse possession. And for us as the public, when we went out and found people who could sign affidavits about how, what, how the public had used the river over the course of decades, it really focused on accessing at a limited number of points and then being in the river corridor itself. So in order to meet the legal burden, that's where we focused our efforts.
Yeah, I remember when we were doing the first phase one of the river restoration, we were talking about going ahead and quiet titling the river. And there's people upset about the river restoration for some reason. But there was opposition because I assumed that it was a town trying to do a power play so they could put a trail on this side of the river. And, and it was just like. And, and it was just like, which wasn't the truth. But, you know, they say it enough times, people believe it. And we well know right now how that works. So, so it was too much of a, a push to do that because it might slow down what we did, the work that we did do. So we had to cancel it out at the time. So now we're getting to it. Where are we, guys? This is, are we done with the discussion? Any, are y'all seeking direction from this? Or have you heard enough to know direction? If there's anybody who disagrees with the direction they've been hearing, speak up.
I think we're going to get, there seems to be agreement that we need to survey. And we need to investigate our, maybe our aerial. We need to get a group together to walk the river.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I heard a lot of great direction and, and thoughts tonight. Peter, if you're still out there, thanks for joining us. I think that was super helpful. I certainly have some, some ideas. I took good notes from each one of you tonight. I would like the opportunity to come back and present more of a cohesive, this is what I heard, and these are some recommendations to move forward, some perhaps cost estimates on how much it would cost to hire maybe the town engineer to do a, you know, an omnibus survey of, of the river. And that, that's a big project. But if, if that's okay, come back with some recommendations and more fully-formed plan. I'm certainly going to investigate the, the near map. That seems like a, a good, and maybe there's, if Town of Vale's doing it, maybe they can work with us. Some cost sharing there, who knows? But if there's tools we can use that help us in addition to on-the-ground inspections and trying to get a handle on things, you know, doing the research in our existing files of what was permitted and what wasn't, how long is that going to take? How many, how many hours of staff time? That's what I'd like to come back with. Does that sound about right? Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, any other questions? All right. Next item on the agenda.
So it looks like we have, I have direction. I don't know if you want me to repeat that direction that we got for Taylor Street. It seems like hopefully that, that will move forward. There were just a couple of things that Jeff Spinell is going to go back and research. So other than that, and I'm sorry, I didn't know I needed to jump into the manager's report. But did you want to?
Oh, I do that a lot.
Okay, that's all right. So I, I did want to make sure that, that you saw that we, I wanted to make sure that we had an actual amount for the water treatment plant engineering that I probably gave you erroneous numbers the last time because I didn't know that there was an additional dollar amount that was part of this whole project. So there's still about one point three million dollars remaining to be paid in twenty twenty-five, and that will require a, a budget supplement. So anyway, those are things I just wanted to make sure that I corrected from my, my last report. The interesting thing about the Dolores Bridge is that the arches could be used as a facade. They don't believe that it's going to cost you less to actually use the bridge. They actually believe that using the arches, if you're interested, as a facade. So in other words, it would be attached to your new bridge would be something they would really be in favor of. I think they'd really like to see that bridge being used. And Jeff answered, asked some questions about the bolts and rivets and things like that. So it seems like it would still work. But they will give us an estimate of using the bridge from the Dolores Bridge as a bridge. So at least we'll get some numbers from CDOT. The really important thing, they really wanted to make sure that we knew that we need to quiet title that area where the Bellum Bridge is. The last thing you want is the federal acquisition process with a, you know, title work that's not necessarily clear. So they really emphasized that, that the town go ahead with a quiet title, even if it's in that area where the Bellum Bridge, so you don't have to deal with that. If not, if it gets very complicated, even with a private landowner, let alone a, a title that you can't determine. So the Williams Street, I think that it seems to be very clear from CDOT, they're not going to reverse the direction of Williams Street. There's not enough room to make a right-hand turn. They would have to have a third lane, basically right turn only. And of course, you're going to see trucks that are going to want to jump over. You know, you're going to have to build another lane with some type of structure that keeps them from crossing, trying to make a left-hand turn. So it's going to continue to, to be one-way going south. Did provide just a draft of the little beach park wall and playground, just so you kind of have an idea where we're at and making sure that we're going through the process correctly. So we just had to, I had to back Jeff Spinell up. So we did advertise on our website because it does require competitive bid process for the retaining wall at the little beach park. And when I asked Jeff Armistead about the current playground equipment, he said he's interested in it, even if to hold it for a while. So I thought, well, that would, well, at least there's a, a place for the playground equipment. So I wanted to make sure, I have been in places where we tried to tear down a playground and, you know, there's a lot of emotional attachment to those things. So anyway, and then it looks like the safe street for all, they had, Silt has a little, a smaller bump out than the, the normal bump out. And so anyway, something that they're going to be researching. Stolpus, is that a conference this week, as you were telling me? So they'll, they're looking at probably mid-April to kind of finalize that plan.
Thank you, Katie.
Sure, sorry about missing that.
We probably should go through a little bit of review of what we talked about for Taylor Street just because we did that in a work session. I would hate to think that was a, like a decision or something made in a work session, so.
Well, you want to run down that year list, Kate? I love the decision I did. Let's see, A through J.
A through J.
Two were the issues we were dealing with.
So A, I have paved, I'll just say, the northern extent of Taylor Avenue reconstruction, pave the right-of-way only. One. Paving private driveways, no. The five-foot asphalt apron is all that the town will do and let the property owners know that they can negotiate directly with, sorry. Directly with the contractor. That's number one. Mayor, excuse me, Taylor Minter Road intersection, just to reconstruct and pave the current street location. And that includes D as well, just pave the right-of-way only at this time. Drays considerations of a swale is what they're looking for on the east side of Taylor. Of course, that is going to be some concern of the citizens there regarding parking. The width of the roadway, twenty-two feet, is what the reconstruction and asphalt paving. Traffic calming. He, he wanted to do a little bit more research on the traffic calming in, in that, on, on Taylor. The parking for the Minter Mile to retain the fifty-four perpendicular parking spaces just, and make sure that we go back to Mentor North and make sure they're constructed as the plans, provide, construction plans. The drainage and grade at Minter Town Homes is not to deal with the hump. The hump will remain as, as it is. Minter Town Home Drainage will make sure that we contact the HOA and let them know that we'll have to negotiate directly with the contractor, the awarded contractor regarding any stormwater improvements.
All right, thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have future meeting topics. Agenda topics, excuse me. I would, I would like to add to the list a discussion item for, to poll the board, the board on interest in affordable housing. There are some opportunities coming up, which, well, I wouldn't say no, no time immediately. But it, it would, some, one of them would be truly affordable if we were able to get the paperwork. And so I'd like to put that over the future agenda.
So I just have a couple of issues with the nineteenth. So currently, on the nineteenth, there's a Highlands parcel discussion. What we, what Scott has done is that there are going to be people here that have experts in conservation easements. It's going to be an education process. They're not going to give you a price. But it would really be helpful as US Council members would just email myself, which is interim@mentor.org, or the citizens as well, your questions that you may have, what you would like these experts to consider before they come into your meeting on the nineteenth. I think that would be really helpful. So we'd like that by the twelfth, so that they have time to review those. And I'll send you out an email probably the first of next week just to say, hey, this is a reminder to send us all the questions that you may have regarding, regarding conservation easement. That will be basically an education process. You're not going to get a price on the nineteenth, just so you kind of are not expecting something at that time. And if you have other organizations that you would like to cooperate on that, that, that maybe I don't know about, I'm sure I don't know about, Scott may, make sure that you provide that information so that, that we have that. And KRW, they will be closing the town manager applications on the fourteenth of March. And so they're going to also be added into these meetings as well in April. So you've got a lot on your future meetings.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Kate.
Earl, is what you're asking for different than what's on, what's proposed for the nineteenth?
No, no, this is, what I'm asking for will be when we have room for that discussion on the future, any future meetings. Nineteen, the nineteenth is really kind of busy.
Does Eagle County Housing Update and Minter's Locals Housing Policy Discussion, is that different than what you just said?
That's the housing needs analysis that's been ongoing for the last year that the town of Avon and Eagle County are, are leading. Our report is done. So EPS has finalized their report, a really comprehensive look at needs, housing needs, demographics, everything from one end of the valley to the other. So they're going to be here presenting that to you. We'll get that to you well in advance of that meeting, so you have time. It's a pretty thick document.
My idea was, you know, to get guidance from council on pursuing certain availabilities, like with the power services and so forth.
Okay.
I don't want to go spending time to find out now that that's not going to work for us.
I just didn't know if those were the same thing or different, but it sounds like they're different.
By the way, you're all in housing, so I need to talk to you. Okay, so there's no other discussion? We have a motion we got to take care of.
Make a motion to adjourn.
About Tom, who, who seconded?
I'll second.
Okay, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?